This meeting is being recorded. If anyone wishes to make an audio or video recording of the meeting, please notify me at this time. We're going to start by opening the public budget hearing and then I'm going to open the public budget hearing first and followed by our regular meeting. And if anyone wishes to make a comment during the public budget hearing, you're welcome to. Please raise your hand and state your name and...
Do I have to state your address?
Yes, they're local.
Yeah, if you're local, state your address, please. And we are going to limit public comment to three minutes per person. So I'm just letting you know I have a timer. So if you would like to speak, if you could raise your hand and...
Lauren. I'm being told that we're not projecting loud enough for the back of the room.
Okay.
So, yeah, so we're gonna have to shout.
Okay. Well, I'll talk as loud as I can. I just don't want to sound like I'm yelling. Lori?
Can I request that you present the budget before the public comment?
No. We're gonna do that at the end. And also after a public comment, there will be no more comments. This is a public meeting that is being held by the school committee that you're in attendance at. And once we have public comment, I will not take any more comments from the crowd.
... 24 hours in advance. So everyone here should be able to see the budget that you're asking for input for right now.
What's the... It was posted, right?
My understanding is...
There were no changes made at the last meeting to the current budget.
There are no changes made from the last budget.
So there'd be no changes...
Well, to the line items. There could be, based on the vote, but the budget was presented at the preliminary budget meeting.
Were there any votes by the committee?
No. Yes?
I'd like to speak now. 125 out.
I'll just take you one at a time. If you want to go ahead. You want to see... Yeah.
Oh, I'd love to. Thank you. I don't like to put my back to people, so I'm gonna go over here. I speak fast, so I will get three minutes in. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight. I come before you all with deep concern about proposed cuts again to our school budget at Halifax Elementary. As a parent of two current students, I feel compelled to speak up about the critical importance of protecting our schools and their future. I understand the need for these cuts is influenced by several factors, including slow growth in the town, increased special education costs, and the continued financial challenges faced last year. Any additional cuts to this school threaten not just the quality of education, but the fabric of our community. Programs that make learning well-rounded like arts, music, athletics, libraries risk of disappearing. Class sizes will grow, stretching teachers too thin, and leaving students without the attention and resources they need to thrive. Essential services like counseling, parents, academic support, and reading and math services that many kids depend on could be reduced or lost. This issue extends far beyond the classroom. A reduction in educational quality impacts our children academically, socially, emotionally, throughout their lives. It affects the town's economic health, lowering property taxes, or values discouraging new families moving here, and forcing current families to leave. Education is not just a line item in a budget. It's the foundation of a strong, vibrant, and thriving community. I'm not sure the way out of this with the current year, other than having these conversations, but I sincerely urge us to explore creative solutions and push for change for long-term forecasting. No more cuts. Can the town pursue additional state or federal grants? Other opportunities to partner local businesses? Can we advocate or think about Chapter 70 or Circuit Breaker funds differently? Short term, I do understand the importance of advocating for override, but this is just a Band-Aid to a larger problem. I don't have all the answers, but I believe we owe it to our children and our community to explore every option before more cuts. We cannot shortchange our children, and we cannot do this to our teachers and staff at Halifax Elementary. This isn't just about numbers on a spreadsheet. We can't keep chipping away at our school services. It sends a message that we don't value our children or our teachers, and I refuse to admit that. Thank you so much for all the work you do. Let's continue to work together to protect what matters the most. It's our kids, it's our school, and it's the future. Thank you.
Who would like to speak next? Go ahead.
Hi, everybody. Catherine Snyder, 5 Warren Drive. My husband and I moved here two and a half years ago when my job relocated to Boston. And we moved here because of the solid school systems. We have twin boys who are first grade, and we have a three-year-old daughter. And they are why I am here. I'm here for my children, my friends' children, our neighbors' children, the children of Halifax. That's what we need to think about tonight and for the future. And so we're trusting you, all of you, to make the right decisions for our children. Our twins are in the largest class at the elementary school. Twenty-three students, per se, per classroom. Your cuts are gonna make it 30-plus kids. I can barely get my two boys to speak, to listen to me, never mind 30-plus kids in a classroom. These poor teachers, how are they gonna teach our children? I looked up, I researched negative effects of larger class size, and there's plenty. I could list them, but you're giving me only three minutes. There was not one positive to adding students to a classroom, not one. So why are we thinking about that? I want to touch on the teachers and staff. We are already asking so much of them, and we cut last year. If you cut more pairs in teachers, you're gonna get even more highly qualified and effective teachers to leave. They're overburdened, they're overwhelmed, and they're gonna leave. We're not gonna have qualified people to teach our children. Our son has an IP. Thank you to Mr. Bowdre, Mrs. Reddy, and Mrs. Vanelle for putting him first last year. And I implore you to do the same for all of our children in this community. He has made strides, but if you cut resources, these kids are gonna be set up for failure. I would also note, my daughter is three, and she will be going to kindergarten. If you cut kindergarten, she's not gonna be ready for first grade. Bottom line. I am a law-abiding, tax-paying citizen of this town. How many people here put their kids in kindergarten in this school for free? Okay, a few people. There's a lot of people that have. How is that fair that I have to pay for my kid to go to kindergarten and all the families that have kids entering? But most importantly, they deserve to go to kindergarten. Lastly, I leave you. I have 15 years in the finance world. I have worked for some of the largest companies in this world. And inflation isn't going away, folks. Everything is increasing. How do you cut? How do you cut our kids' education when things are going up? There's no math that makes that right. So I just implore you to really think about the decisions that you are making. They are for our children, for the future, for the future of the school and the town. And I really, really hope that we can all come together, we need to come out to these meetings, we need to come out to the town, and I implore you to go back to the town. No cuts. No cuts. Let's do service level. I promise you, I will be the first person in line with all of you to make this happen. Thank you.
Anyone else want to speak? Yes?
Dear members of the school committee, I am speaking today to strongly urge you to prioritize funding for Halifax Elementary School in the upcoming budget. The success and future of our children depend on the resources and opportunities that we provide them in the classroom. The challenges of today's education, whether it be advancing technology, meeting diverse learning needs, or maintaining safe and well-planned facilities, require investment. Halifax Elementary School is the heart of Halifax. By underfunding our school, we risk undermining the very foundation of our community's future. I truly believe that it is essential to invest in all areas of a child's education: curriculum, classroom teachers, specialist areas, support staff, I could go on, so that every student has an equal chance to be successful. As a school volunteer for the past seven years, I have seen firsthand how last year's cuts have negatively affected this building. The teachers and support staff have stepped up and made these changes work, only because of their dedication to teaching. You made enough cuts last year. Please consider all options before any more.
Go ahead.
Hi, guys. Sorry. Just wanted to check. The livestream, I guess, is not working tonight, so we apologize for trying to get it going. My name is Jonathan Seelick. I'm at 86 Stonewall Road. I have three children at Silver Lake. They started here at HES. They're now middle school and two in the high school. I just wanted to give you guys a glimpse of what we're facing here on the town side. And before I get going, I want to thank our committee and our administration. This is never an easy time of the year, and it seems that this year is historically tough. No mix about it. So I wanted to get a statement here going. My wife told me to type it because I umm a little bit too much and try to go off the cuff. So here's what I want to say. First off, one thing I would like to address tonight is that there seems to be a narrative out there that the town is cutting funding to the school budget. That could not be further from the truth. The school budget has never been cut and has always increases from year to year, always. On the average, the town of Halifax gives about 54% of its budget to our schools. And a little budget background, over the last decade, the average increase in cost of total education has from year to year, and that's elementary school and Silver Lake, is a little over 3%. It's actually 3.14% over the last 10 years. The largest increase we had was back in 2021, and that was a little over 5%. So this year, for a level service budget, the administration has presented budgets with increases of 14% at Silver Lake and 23% at Halifax Elementary School. For any town, these are not just budget bumps. These are tidal waves, like that Halifax has few ever seen. In light of these increases, we're doing what we can on the town side of things to try to help. We had every department submit both level service budgets as well as budgets with a 10% reduction to their current budgets to try to get a handle on what additional cuts we can make on the town side that would have a minimal impact on town services. Another example of approaching this is a collaborative team effort. The town's first responders, our police and our fire, have submitted level-funded budget proposals with a 0% increase for next year. Another hurdle we face is Chapter 70 at the state level. Funding for fiscal year '26 is a little over 1%, primarily because the school is expecting a 3.7% decrease in enrollment for the '26 school year. And I bring this up not to single out our schools and point fingers, quite the opposite. I want the people of Halifax to know that the town is actively trying to do all it can to help. And Halifax is not alone in facing school budget challenges. Our Silver Lake sister schools of Kingston and Plinton, as well as schools across the Commonwealth, are in similar situations, finding themselves scrambling to bridge a school budget gap. Many are actively considering Proposition 2.5 overrides to address the issue. Speaking of overrides, I caution the committee that viewing a potential override as a cure of all here in Halifax is a risky proposition. First, the only town body that can call for an override is the Board of Selectmen, and I can't speak to how the board would vote. The other thing to consider is that for every resident that approaches me about increasing school funding, I hear from just as many residents saying that they are getting taxed out of our town. So as you consider your final budget tonight, I humbly ask that you try to balance your desire to fulfill the asks with a realistic view of what is actually feasible. I wish you all good luck, and I thank you for your reference.
I didn't prepare anything written. I also will say, my name is Tom Pratt, Ten Arrow Head Path. I'm a resident of Halifax, a kindergartner, and a daughter about a year and a half away from kindergarten. I'm also an elected town official on the Board of Selectmen, so I echo a lot of what Jonathan said. I would like to thank all of you for your time and efforts. There are no easy tasks. There is no... It's an unenviable situation that we're all in. I also urge caution on an override, seeing what happened with the CPA for a very small increase. I have my doubts about override passing in town, so I would encourage the school committee to vote, not bare bones, but do what you can to make it feasible, allowing the rest of the budget to pass, you know, with gumption about what can be successful. The teachers are in a tough spot, the powers are in a tough spot, specialists, the kids need them, we all agree on that. There are no easy answers, but I would caution you, there's no money coming out of the magic walls. As Jonathan stated, the police department and the fire department have agreed on no increases. I can't say the school committee can do the same, and I recognize that. But there are no easy answers here. We all feel for the children. The children are why I got involved. My kids are why I got involved. You're here because it matters to all of you, and it should, which represents over the town. But I would just caution you, a budget that's presented that will not pass depending on an override is something that I don't believe to be sustainable, speaking as a parent. So I would caution you on that.
Anyone else? I will call the regular meeting to order at 6:16, and we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I do want to thank everyone for coming because our community is better when we all work together, and I appreciate the comments of everyone that shared. Now we'll go on to... Do we... Don't need to do that, right? Okay. Review and vote the regular minutes of January 13. Does anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept them as written.
I'll second.
Okay. Who vote? Katie?
Yes.
Lori? Karen?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Myself is yes. Full regionalization discussion.
No updates.
No updates? Okay. Approval of bill schedule?
Our meetings are currently out of sync with the warrant cycle. There was a warrant that was due to the town on February 3rd that went out as a single signature warrant, and it was for $356,512.40. The next warrant is due to the town on March 3rd.
School correspondence and reports. I don't have anything there. And then we'll go to our report of standing committees. For the policy committee, we have to make a motion to waive the second read unless you want to go through and read them all, or... And then we can have a discussion and vote.
I'll make a motion to waive the second reading of policies BEDB, H... I'm sorry. BHE, EFC, EFD, EHAA, EHB, GBE, IJNDC, JICJ, KDC, KDCB, KHB, and KHC.
Anyone second?
I'll second.
Okay. So we'll have a vote about waiving the second read? Sorry.
All those are favor?
Aye.
Thanks. Does anyone want to make... We can discuss or just vote to accept them? We have to make a motion first? Do we have to read them all?
The letters, yes.
I want to discuss one, if we can discuss one.
I think we have to make the motion first, and then we can discuss it.
My laptop is not connecting.
Okay. So I'll make a motion to discuss policies...
Vote to approve and discuss.
Vote to approve and discuss, or discuss then approved. Policies BEDB, BHE, EFC, EFD, EHAA, EHB, GBE, IJNDC, JICJ, KDC, KDCB, KHB, and KHC.
Okay. Which one did you want to discuss?
The advertising in schools. KHB and KHC distribution of notices. This isn't... This is allowing us to still advertise our sports and everything, correct? So if like...
No, this would only allow you to advertise things within the school.
So this is stopping sports from being able to advertise in the school?
For-profit sports and recreation, depending upon what the committee votes, would no longer be filtered through the schools.
And this would have to be the same as the rest of the district? Like, we couldn't make... Can we make an adjustment for our school, or...
I just think the easier we can get information out... I know it's the printing and the handing out and all that, but if we could just do the digital version of it, of sports, things of that nature. I feel like it's already hard enough to find sports.
So can I just make a suggestion not to interrupt? Because we have such a large audience here, and I'm not sure how many folks took a look at the discussion we had at the last meeting, could we just reiterate why the staff thought this was... Or why we were looking to make this change?
Sure. The reason why this proposal was made is because of the sheer number and volume of requests that we get, and the lack of staffing that we have, and the concerns that we're looking at continual budget reductions. And so this is becoming labor-intensive for our staff to keep up with both recreation and private, even activities that are for-profit. So right now, the school committee has been approving flyers for both recreation and for-profit activities, and it's becoming burdensome to staff in a day and age where most organizations have access to the internet and can have a website.
And this includes... I'll be perfectly honest, I don't even know what the status is of the Scouts any longer, but it includes groups like Scouts, correct?
It would include anything that wasn't school-sponsored.
Correct. Okay.
That was the proposal that was provided to the policy subcommittee and brought to you.
Okay. I'm okay with the policy because of the sheer number of things that do come through, and we have town Facebook pages and other ways to disseminate information to the public that I don't think should be the responsibility of our already stretched-in office staff.
And so can I ask another question? It's a real... We have lots of difficult conversations to have tonight and difficult decisions to make. So in a perfect world, we would want our children to have access to all the information, our parents to have access to all of those things, and supported by the school, but given some of the challenges. The volume of which, like, can you... Like, are we getting multiple a week, multiple a day? And is it an email? Is it a...
So the ones that come before you, you probably get about two a month, probably, through the school committee?
At least.
And those are for non-school-sponsored activities. School-sponsored activities are more frequent and more common, but part of our responsibility.
And they're delivered digitally? They're not paper copies, or are they paper copies?
It's a mix. I mean, and some will go to Karen Tringali at Central Office, some will come to Ellen. All different forms.
Yeah. I just think it's important because there is a large group of people here to understand what we're talking about.
I mean, I'll vote to approve all of them, but this one, these two, I don't know if we're gonna...
Well, you'd have to say no to all of them, I think.
Or I can make an amendment to my motion. Can I ask one more question? Should we vote to change this policy? And we receive feedback from our community next year that it's not working. Can we revisit the policy?
Can always revisit the policy.
Policy subcommittee can always choose to revisit a policy.
My... Jessica, I hear what you're saying, honestly, is it's just not gonna be a fun night for decision-making. I agree. But I think we have to think about how we're using our staff to support education. So that's just my vote.
All right.
Should we have a vote, or is there any more discussion?
I would like to make an amendment to my motion to exclude KHB and KHC from the vote.
Do I have a second?
Second.
And we can bring that back to the policy subcommittee, correct?
Well, you have a vote on the...
Right.
You have a motion on the table to approve these.
So we'd have to... Oh, so we'd have to vote on excluding that first?
That one separately.
Okay. All right. All in favor of excluding KHB and KHC?
Yes.
Yes.
And approving them all.
And approving the other...
Yes.
All right.
Sorry.
No, it's fine.
I'm a yes. Karen?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Negotiations?
Did you want to entertain any motions for KHB and KHC?
I'd like to make a motion to table discussion to the next meeting for KHB and KHC.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right. Sorry. Thank you. Negotiations? I was... Without us? We met with... We started with ground rules for our negotiations with the Halifax Teachers Association and also the custodians, and we have set up future meetings. And obviously, the negotiations are largely impacted by decisions made tonight. Pilgrim Mary Collaborative?
Just getting to my notes. Just give me one second. So we met last week. They accepted the perform... Or we accepted the performance review for the executive director, Dipna Thomas. She got an exemplary rating, lots of high praise for her. There's a survey that's going around for the performance review of our treasurer to provide feedback. We submitted the annual 2024 DESI audit. No further documentation is required for DESI. There are several audits that are happening kind of concurrently this year. Forgive me, I don't have a list of all of them. The 22... Age 22 to 30 placement has started, and they have updated all partner agencies, so they're starting to accept placement for that transition age group. There was a tour. Senator Fernandez, Michelle Badger, Kathleen Laterno toured the school. Some of the students led the tour. Michelle was a former PAC member. And, sorry, I'm gonna... There was a lot. There, in the treasurer's report, enrollment is down from what was expected. However, the way their budget is structured, it's very conservative, so they only staff to what the current needs are, but the budget has some wiggle room should enrollment go up. But it is a little bit of a... They have enough money with a lower enrollment to fund. However, with the lower enrollment, they don't have a revenue stream that they anticipated. The enrollment is lower than anticipated. So those are all of the updates. And my notes are very extensive, but that is the limit.
Okay. Thank you. Ethan Rec? Katie?
So this is from Mr. Steele. He says, first, the recreation department canceled all the activities last week.
Um, so this is from Mr. Steele, he says, first, the recreation department canceled all the activities last weekend to allow for the school to have a deep clean and he's hoping that this will help break the sickness that has had an outbreak at Halifax Elementary. All after school programs are going well, the recreation department is always looking to add teacher mentored programs. The basketball program is in full swing and the gym is being used seven days a week. Dick and Bob Clancy, so he's talking about himself, will be discussing when the recreation. Youth and rec committee will be able to refinish the floor of the gym with the addition of two paddleboard courts. The approximate cost is nine thousand dollars. The recreation department will be picking up the cost, partially paid by a grant. He does not break it down. Looking ahead, they have the annual Easter egg hunt coming up or a holiday egg hunt coming up on four thirteen. And there's more information to come. He'd like to thank the highway department, Steve Hayward. Because of that help, they were able to get the glass out of the gaga pit once it was vandalized and it should be opened in the spring. Summer is right around the corner and they're hoping to bring back popular, the, the popular teen, teen extreme camp for kids entering grades six, seven, and eight, as well as the art and STEM camps that were attended well last year. And finally, they're looking to start a toddler camp site and it, everything is to be announced as they're still beginning to draft that.
Great, thank you. P Q?
I do not know that one, Katie tomorrow.
Okay. Capital budget did not meet admin review?
There's a meeting scheduled for the twenty-fifth with Union Thirty-One, but nothing new to report.
Okay. D E I B Subcommittee?
No updates.
Okay. Union Thirty-One, there's a meeting on February twenty-fifth. Okay, Principal Bowdery?
All right, thank you. The school council has an upcoming meeting after February break. We were not able to pull off a meeting in January, our, all of our schedules conflicted, so. We're continuing work with the handbook, I'll get to on step number four there. We have the flyer distribution is. Flag football night from the South Shore Flag Football.
Is that the only one?
That's the only one that I have.
Any motions or discussions about the flag football flyer? It's digital?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right.
All right.
Thank you. And was asked last time to report on the number of students that were meeting and exceeding in MCAS. So those numbers were in the folder there. In math, we had in grade three, there was fourteen exceeding and thirty-nine that were meeting. Total of seventy-seven students in the grade.
Do you have the percentage?
The percentage, you asked me for the numbers, but you want me to read those too?
No, I wanted the percentages because I wanted to know how it was meeting up with your, with the school goal of seventy percent.
The percentage for math, meeting and exceeding was forty-four percent.
In grade three?
In grade three. Forty-six in grade four. In grade five, it was forty percent. And in grade six, it was forty percent.
What was grade three again, I'm sorry?
Grade three was.
Forty-four?
Forty, yeah.
Oh wait, scratch that, sorry, hold on. Wrong column. Sorry, folks. Scratch that whole number. We were much better than that, I was reading the state numbers, I know, you guys are gonna kill me, sorry. All right, sorry about that, Lauren.
Freaking everybody out.
Oh, boy. All right, so math, grade three, meeting and exceeding was sixty-nine percent. There we go. I know, I know. Uh, grade four, math, meeting and exceeding was fifty-one percent. Grade five, math, meeting and exceeding was sixty percent. And grade six, math, meeting and exceeding was forty-two percent.
Okay.
E L A, grade three, meeting and exceeding was seventy-three percent. Grade four, forty-six percent. Grade five, forty-six percent. And grade six was fifty-five percent.
Okay.
And then just in terms of measuring progress, it's, we use our dibbles, dibbles and star benchmark. That we do three times a year. We just did our benchmarks from the fall to the winter. And our E L A overall, grades two through, three through six was up from fifty-two percent to sixty-two percent. And then in math, it was up seven percent. Fifty-eight was the fall score and we're up to sixty-five percent. Did you want that broken down by grade level or, that's just like a combined?
I mean, and I was more, you know, wanting to know that your measure of progress in between MCAS, does it correlate with what you're seeing with MCAS scores so that we know that the measure of progress? You know, like they, there's a correlation?
It has, it has, so like what we're doing now is we're taking like our scaled score from STAR and then we compare our scaled score on MCAS. It's not a perfect science, but it's like we just take the average of the grade. And it is showing us whether or not students are, are meeting or exceeding. So it is a pretty good indicator of it and we've tracked it for the last several years now. Last year was a little tricky because we added a benchmark, which didn't, it, it kind of, that was the first year that we did four benchmarks. And we've typically done three, so last year was a little bit off. But it has, it has shown to be a really solid indicator of where our kids will be at by the end of the year.
Did we do a writing benchmark too for?
We did. We did do, that was, this is the first year that we're doing it. So we did, um, I'm trying to think, was it December?
No, it was before that.
November.
November, I think.
November was the first one that we did.
Could I just ask you a question?
Hmm?
Thank you. So we're looking at the PDF that's eight point A point two. That's the numbers that, and you just wrote us the percentages rather than the numbers? Is that correct?
Correct, yep.
So I just, so I confused about the, the math doesn't work, so I just want to double check on them. So for the math and the E L A, the total, the total numbers, I don't know if you just copied and pasted by accident or something because the numbers don't add up and then depending on what the right answers are for those, then I can look at the percentages. But right now the just, the math isn't working here.
This, the numbers that are on this sheet, these are the actual number of students, it's not percentages.
So it says, and I don't know if I'm not looking at the right thing, so I'm sorry. So it says math, right, and it says exceeding is fourteen?
Fourteen students.
And then meeting is thirty-nine?
Yes.
And then seventy-seven, is that the total number of kids in the grade?
Yes.
Okay, and then you got those percentages from there?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone? Oh, no, sorry, sorry. Is there a plan to do another writing benchmark prior to MCAS?
Yes.
Do we know when that's going to be? Because MCAS is coming quick.
Yeah, I spoke about that last time, um, there's going to be a common assessment for writing. I think it's the, the first week, in the first full week in March, there'll be another one, there was one at the end of November and there'll be another one beginning of March.
Thank you. Well, I know we've discussed interventions that you are using for the kids that are not meeting and exceeding. And I would assume those are in place.
Yep.
For?
Yep.
Okay.
After we have our, at our data meetings, we kind of break down the numbers and which students are moving in which direction and then we kind of make a targeted plan for those students.
Did you have anything else, Karen?
Have these numbers decreased from our numbers last year, do you know? I don't know if you know that, it's okay if you don't.
Which, which numbers?
Just off in general, like the trend, so like by the cohort, like so for grade six, did the grade five students last year have higher numbers? Or are they pretty much staying the same?
I don't know off of.
I'm just curious.
I'd have to go and look into each grade level and I can pull that together for next time.
This was, this was, this was this year. I think overall, I attended the third grade data meeting with Kane and the third grade team. And I was really impressed with the focus on the data and the talk and the specific conversation around students that weren't either, you know, exceeding or meeting and what were going to be some of the interventions that they had in place. It was a really robust conversation and I felt like they did a nice job of really making sure that no student was sort of left behind or not, not in some kind of intervention, that there wasn't some kind of plan. So I try to attend at least one data meeting in the middle of the year at each one of the schools and the third grade team was the one that I was able to attend. So I'm trying to make sure that throughout all, all three of the elementary schools, that the beginning of year, middle of year, end of year assessments and then the data meetings are happening, would talk about the interventions that are happening for specific individual students and group students. So I think we're very much on par, I can't speak for Kane, but there's definitely a great attention being paid to making sure that if students aren't meeting benchmarks, we're looking at instruction, we're looking at curriculum and we're looking at specific interventions. So.
Well, and just given that, that where we are right now is a little, I mean, some grades are closer to the seventy percent, I mean, like grade three. But, um, you know, just kind of like, do you have like mini goals of percentages you're going to reach before you get to seventy?
Well, seeing that, uh, pretty much based upon our STAR scores, both in E L A and math, we're, we're really on target to kind of meet that seventy percent.
Okay.
So, you know, in, you know, E L A for grades three, three is at sixty-four percent meeting and exceeding in STAR. Grade four was at sixty-eight. Grade five was at sixty-one and grade six was at sixty-two. And then in math, grade three was at sixty-seven. Grade four was at sixty-eight, grade five was at sixty-one and grade six was at seventy-five percent.
Great.
So we're hopeful that we'll continue that trajectory towards the spring and then we'll show that up and for the MCAS as well.
Great, thank you. Any other comments?
Uh, the goals I had shared last month, is it something, should I, I go over the goals again? For student learning goal, professional practice goal and school improvement goal? Those are, the student learning was the seventy percent and our professional practice one was focusing on our M T S S process. And then our school improvement goal is looking at identifying strengths and weaknesses in our E L A instructional strategies. Was, those were the three goals that we talked about.
I, I think that was on there to discuss like where you were percentage wise.
Oh, okay, all right.
We're good.
Excellent. And the handbook, so there's two components here with the handbook. One is that during the tiered focus monitoring review that we had last year, there was a language in our existing handbook that didn't include manifestation procedures and emergency removal procedures. So in there, we had to replace the language on page, pages thirty-four to forty with the language on pages forty through forty-nine.
This is a lot to go through.
It is, it is a lot, so that's why we had to.
I don't know, I would like more time to read over it. And I think I, since now we know what the changes are. I think we, if we could put this on the agenda for next time. So that we can, thank you.
And then the other piece with our handbook is, we were working on for F Y twenty-six, that is with our school council. So we submitted that to our, to the attorney for first review to make sure everything is in there. And so she, our attorney has sent it back to us, so we're in our second process of going through it. So we'll continue that work in addition to this piece, but. That's all.
Thank you. Sarah?
I'd like to start with the financial report. If you look at the printout that you had in your school committee folders, on page one, you can see that there, I have created a special ed legal line that separates our special ed legal expenditures so that can be properly reported. On page two, as I've said earlier, the school adjusted council was moved from a special ed staff line to the appropriate line. The psychologist was moved to an appropriate special ed line and I've created a line for the nursing contracted services. On page three, there's a lot of moving parts with special ed. The special ed bookkeeper maintains a separate spreadsheet tracking special ed contracted services, tuitions and transportation from the three different sources, operating budget, the circuit breaker revolving account and the two forty grant funds. Her spreadsheet that was updated for this meeting today shows an overall surplus of about three hundred and ninety-one thousand in those accounts right now. Questions about the financial report?
Do we anticipate that surplus will remain or are we? Yeah, I, I know. Crystal Ball is not here.
Well, barring any new students or replacements or unexpected, it should probably remain about that, but. This is special education costs we're talking about, so that's why we have this update every single meeting.
And just to clarify, if we do have a surplus this year in our special education budget, those monies cannot be put into next year's budget. It's, we go through a process, will we return that to the town or am I mischaracterizing that?
So the, I just spoke about three different essentially buckets of money. The operating budget, things that are not spent in the operating budget get turned back to the town on June thirtieth. The circuit breaker revolving account by law can carry up to one year of circuit breaker funds in it. And the two forty grant funds can carry over for up to three years, depending on their usage. So if there is money left in circuit breaker revolving or, or the two forty grant funds, we could use that to offset the F Y twenty-six budget. We just won't know about that until June.
Thank you.
Next on my report is grants, there are no new grants or donations at this time. And the last thing I have for you, um, the F Y twenty-six adult meal price increase. The food service director just went through a Blensky audit process with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And they explained that Halifax is not following the federal formula for adult meals. So beginning in August of twenty twenty-five, the adult meal price will go from four dollars plus tax up to five dollars and twenty-five cents with tax. So with the tax included in, it's going from four dollars and twenty-eight cents to five dollars and sixty-two cents. That has nothing to do with budgets, that has to do with being in alignment with federal, federal regulations.
Is that just a notification, we don't have to vote or anything, just to let us know? Okay. Any other questions?
Includes my report.
Thank you. Dr. Clifford?
So tonight I have a few things to talk about.
So, tonight I have a few things to talk about. The first is the curriculum and instruction assessment update. You'll recall that I've been talking about the district, the district's been working with the Hill for Literacy to conduct a full district-wide literacy assessment, and a few of those things, a few things happened with that. Number one, all of the staff were surveyed, all the staff and faculty were asked to complete inventories based on what literacy assessments they used. And also, all faculty and staff who were different people, were parts of groups that were interviewed. So, it really had those three components to the assessment that the Hill for Literacy conducted. And the district literacy leadership team met with the Hill for Literacy on January 23rd, and they shared the results from those three things, from the surveys, from the interviews, from the inventories. And just collectively, there were over all 799 elementary and 388 secondary comments collected during the interviews, 116 elementary faculty and staff were interviewed, and 74 secondary and faculty and staff were interviewed. So, the data collected in all of those three modalities was conducted in an effort to support leaders in identifying strengths and literacy goals across five major areas. Leadership, tiered instructional model, professional learning, assessment, and family engagement. It was really to find information to, in those different categories specifically. Based on the data and analysis, three to five recommendations for each of those areas was provided for the Hill for Literacy. So, the Hill did a nice job of meeting with the people who were part of the district literacy team on the 23rd, and they, and they went through all of these pieces with us. And they also created a video for each faculty at each one of the schools to watch, where they went over all of the information, so that everybody in each one of the schools could understand what the findings were, in the areas, and some recommendations. So, as it stands right now, on March 6th, the DLLT is going to get together at the high school, the Hill's going to take us through a process where all of the data that they gathered, and we're going to look in those, those categories that I mentioned, and create a literacy plan for the district. So, again, there'll be different goals under each one of those large categories, with action steps and a timeline, who's going to be responsible, and all of those things. When that's completed, I'll share that with you, so that you'll clearly be able to see what are the things that are specific to Halifax Elementary School, to the elementary schools across the district in relation to literacy. It's many things in all those five categories, and very comprehensive, but I'm really excited that we're going to have a plan that's going to be very clear in what's going to happen year by year, to really improve literacy throughout the district, and reading, and specifically, obviously, in reading and writing. So, that's, that's more, that more information about that will be forthcoming, but I want to thank the folks that were part of all of those groups that got together. I was really impressed because the executive director, Darcy Byrne, said that her time here doing the needs assessment was as smooth as she's ever had, which is a big compliment, because it's a big undertaking to ask, to try to gather all this data. So, thank you to everybody who participated, it was really great. The other piece I wanted to speak about was the math steering committee. So, there's a larger committee, K through 12, but it's really broken down into two separate groups, the K through six group and the seven through 12 group. Right now, the K through six group is looking at math curriculum for next year, specifically looking at I-Ready and HMH Math. Both meet expectations across the board with Desi's curates, which is where they're vetting for curriculum. They do a lot of work to, to look at curriculums specific to Massachusetts with Massachusetts' teachers' feedback. So, right now, the group is looking at those two curriculums, and will be scoring those curriculums based on a rubric that we've created. And grade seven and eight, they'll also be looking at curriculum and are looking at I-Ready and HMH, with the caveat that ideally, a consistent curriculum is what we would like, and that no matter what, the curriculum needs to meet expectation on curate across the board. So, that's just, those meetings will be ongoing, I'll share more information as that happens. I'll definitely present, and hopefully, maybe some other folks will come to present with me later on this spring to talk about that. Another piece that's happening, and I'll be at HES on Thursday morning, I've been going to each one of the schools and spending about a half a day, meeting with approximately eight faculty and staff members, and asking them questions about the school, really as an entry, entry information for me, to find out more about the schools, which has been extremely helpful to me, and I hope it's been helpful to the schools too. And the last piece is, we are in the process of applying for a 1A grant opportunity for fifth and sixth grade to begin implementing the investigating history curriculum in '25, '26. This would include professional learning opportunities for our fifth and sixth grade teachers. We've been partnering with 1A team on social studies programs at the middle and high school, and also for our sixth through eighth open SIAD curriculum over the past few years. We're hopeful to get this grant, it's already, I believe it's been submitted at this point, so hopefully, we'll get the funds to help us with those things. And the last thing that I have on, is a corrective action plan, you probably see that on the agenda. And basically, it relates in some ways to what Kane was talking about, which is every year, every three years, the Department of Education comes and they conduct what's called a tiered focus monitoring review. They look at both special ed and civil rights information that, they want to make sure that we're complying with all of the laws that we need to be complying with, the things that we need to do. As part of that, three things came up that we need to have you look at, have the policy subcommittee look at. The first thing was the Halifax handbook, which Kane just spoke about. There's some pieces in that that need to be changed, adjusted, or added to, and in particular, it was due process around discipline and a suspension information update. So, some of those things need to be put in there to be in compliance. And the other piece was that bullying and intervention plan, there were a few things that needed to be added to that. And then the last piece is an updated physical restraint policy. So, all of the work that needed to happen to update those three things has been done. Right now, where it stands is the, both the school committee and the policy subcommittee will need to review those things. So, basically, everything's done, it just needs approval from the school committee, and then I will update that information in the Department of Ed portal, and we should be all set. So, that's where it stands right now. So, any questions?
Dr. Crewe?
So, I have two items in the folder for you to take a look at related to data, and I'm going to, while I do that, I'm going to ask Principal Bowdre if he could start our presentation on our screen behind us. But the first chart in your folder you'll see are K through six students attending private and parochial and charter schools, and you'll notice that for Halifax students, the, the number of students attending private schools is down from eight students last year to five students, and in keeping with at least a seven-year trend that's depicted here in terms of number of students attending private and parochial schools. The second chart you'll see are students leaving the district using school choice, and I'm happy to report that no Halifax students are leaving the district using school choice. And in fact, our total number between all four districts is at a, an all-time low since 2016, 2017. So, those are our school choice numbers. Next, I'd like to go over our budget presentation, beginning with some review of where we left off last time, if we take a look at the goals in particular. You may recall that we provided the committee with both a 10 percent reduction, as requested by the town, as well as level services for comparison. We explained to you that the level services allows us to support student needs, maintain appropriate class sizes, and support the strategy for district improvement. Since the last time we met, Sarah and Lauren have both met with the town administrator to discuss possible town needs. Tonight, this evening, you'll see two potential options. One, we have structured the, the potential cuts in tiers to get to the town request of a 1.75 increase over FY '25. I think the overall was 3.25 for both Halifax and Silver Lake combined. So, that's where the 1.75 percent increase comes from. So, you'll see a variety of tiers this evening, and we will talk about the impact. We understand that you may have questions as you go along, please keep in mind that there, there may be answers to some questions as we move along in the budget presentation. And I'm going to turn it over to Sarah.
Thank you, Superintendent Brozen. On this next slide, this is a, this slide was included on our preliminary budget presentation. So, again, this slide is divided up into four quadrants. On the top left-hand quadrant is the FY '26 budget, divided up between regular education, special education, and vocational education, and then down the left-hand side, those numbers, the 1,000, 2,000, 3,000, et cetera, those are the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education broad categories. For 1,000 is administration, 2,000 is instruction, 3,000 is student services, 4,000 maintenance, 5,000 is benefits, 7,000 is fixed costs, and then 9,000s are tuitions. So, the top left-hand corner is the FY '26 budget broken down, the bottom left-hand corner is the FY '25 budget broken down the same way for comparison, the top right-hand side is the percent increase in those broad categories from FY '25 to FY '26, and the bottom right-hand quadrant is the amount of increase from FY '25 to FY '26. So, a summary, the town has allocated a 3.5 percent increase for the Halifax and Silver Lake combined education budget for FY '26. We're presenting a 1.75 percent increase for Halifax Elementary School. The Halifax Elementary Level Service budget for FY '26 was $8,379,816. After deducting anticipated circuit breaker reimbursement of $132,705, there's a difference of $1,305,586 to be addressed. The utilities that were included in the budget include an increase over a four-year average. The shared cost budget is included but has not been voted on yet. There is a potential REAP grant that has not been projected, we haven't heard anything from the federal government about that. Homeless and foster transportation has been adjusted based on prior year's expenses. There are no known retirements at this time, and for out-of-district vocational costs, Halifax currently has one student in a program. I have budgeted three placements, so the students, I believe, need to make their applications to the schools by March 15th, and then they have to notify us by April 1st, so we're still awaiting notification of any things, but this is a number that could be updated. Some important notes, in FY '25, we up, we offset the budget using $847,000 of grants and revolving funds. So, there was a 23 percent increase for level services, this doesn't account for the fact that we offset the budget. If we factor those tuitions and services into the FY '25 budget, the increase is 9.3 percent.
Sarah, how much of that was circuit breaker?
I'm sorry?
Eight hundred and forty-seven thousand, how much of that was circuit breaker funds?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, can I get back to you with that? We have concerns about net school spending and maintenance of effort. So, maintenance of effort has to do with the 240 grant, which is a federal entitlement grant, and essentially, the maintenance of effort says that we need to spend at least as much as we did the prior, prior, prior year. So, when Dr. Panarese applies for the 240 grant, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act grant, they compare the current budget to what the reported budget was on the most recent certified end-of-year report. So, FY '25 was compared to FY '23, FY '26 will be compared to FY '24. It was, Dr. Panarese can probably tell you, quite an ordeal to justify and prove the maintenance of effort for the FY '25 grant for this year. It took months and months of work, which I appreciate. We don't have a lot of confidence that we will make the maintenance of effort for the grant for next year. The net school spending, so, chapter 70 of the general laws establishes an annual net school spending, this is what, the amount of money that is required for an adequate education for students. So, I had to take a deep dive into the numbers for this. Halifax net school spending number for FY '26 is $7,781,789, and factoring in the town-side estimated costs that the town gave me of $1,784,452, that, in addition to what the school committee approves, should put us over that $7.78 million for net school spending. So, it was an area of concern, had to take a deep look into it. I'm withdrawing my concerns about that pending the vote tonight. So, tiered cuts, this is the same as the preliminary budget presentation back in January. So, in order to meet the town's request, we made some leveled cuts. Tier one cuts, if you recall, have already been made. So, these tier one cuts, $77,608, these cuts have already been made and are reflected in the budget numbers that you have. The school committee chair requested that we do an analysis of what it would look like if we moved to three teachers per classroom. So, this is the breakdown, we have an estimated kindergarten size of 85 students next year, and then each grade was promoted kindergarten into first grade, first into second, et cetera. So, these average class sizes, 28 for kindergarten, 27 for first grade, 30 for second grade, 22 for third, 22 for fourth, 25 for fifth, and 23 for sixth, that would be if we staffed at three teachers per grade level. If you take a look on this chart, though, there's a red box around the kindergarten and grade one, we felt that 28 and 27 were really, really high numbers for a kindergarten class and a first grade class. So, when the administration met, we looked at all sorts of alternatives and came up with these, this proposal for tier two cuts. So, keeping in mind that we need to cut 1.3 million in order to meet the goal that the town has asked for, which would be a 1.75 percent increase over last year. Tier two cuts would be $902,660, that includes one custodian, one tech teacher, one library teacher, one art teacher, one special education educator, one bus, one math specialist, one reading specialist, and then a teacher, a grade-level teacher at each of the grades two, three, four, five, and six. Tier three?
Can I just ask how we got from tier one to tier two? Why, there's, I feel like we should have a tier one and a half. We went from having everything in the school to let's do away with tech, library, and art.
So, if you recall from our first presentation, the majority of the items in the budget are not things that we can, that we have control over the amounts. We cut everything we could from the areas in tier one, prior to even presenting you the preliminary budget. Anything else? The, we went over what the drivers were, things like heat, utilities, contractual obligations, salary increases, we don't have control over, and those are in the budget. So, in order to bring the budget down by this amount of money, we're now looking at, we go from things to staffing.
Sarah, can you go back a slide to tier two?
Just to clarify, tier two, that means we're cutting 900 towards, so 1.35 this?
Yes.
And we're still not at the goal at 1.75. To get to the 1.75?
1% increase.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry. 1.3.
1.3 million, 1.75%.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Right, the word 900.
Mm-hmm.
Towards, but. This is just not doable, though. Like, I just, this has got to be another, there's got to be something else. I mean, we just had to close the school for the neurovirus because it was, people were, kids was rowing up in the hallway. But we want to cut a custodian, put more kids in one class, and then I'll throw them all in more classes.
I don't, I don't think anybody wants to cut anything. The reality is, is we can't control what the town can or cannot afford. Only the town can decide that. We have presented a level service budget. You have been asked as the school committee to consider what you'll put forward as a budget to your town. But I don't think anybody in this room wants to cut.
And if we even were to not make these cuts, and even if we cut half the fire department and half the police department, we would not be able to fund this even tier two. Because the school is so much of our town budget.
How's it going to affect our town, though, when the kid, when parents are pulling their kids out of public school and putting them in private?
It won't be good.
I have a lot of questions, but I would like to see if we can finish the presentation.
Could you tell us what number slide that is, in case we want to go back to them? That'd be helpful.
That was slide number 11.
Thank you.
So tier three, again, keeping in mind, we're working towards a $1.3 million goal for cuts. Tier three is an additional $400,000. So at tier three, there's a cut for a kindergarten teacher, one grade-one teacher, and then an additional grade-three, grade-four, and grade-six teacher. These are the class sizes, projected class sizes. This is the comparison. On the left-hand side would be the class sizes for a level service budget. On the right-hand side is with the tier-two and three cuts. Again, keeping in mind, the tier-one cuts have already been made. So that, with the tier-two and tier-three cuts, there would be 28 students in kindergarten class, 27 in first grade, 30 in second, 34 in third, 34 in fourth, 26 in fifth grade, and 35 in sixth. Average class size would be 30 students per class.
For clarification, this is still full-day kindergarten, correct?
Yes. So this next slide is just a reminder that in the level service proposal, this is a flashback to what happened last year. So we had $700,000 in cuts from FY25. It would be extremely difficult to compete with lost services supervision for students and staff for FY26. So in FY25, we had, we lost a reading teacher, four paraprofessionals, a part-time behaviorist, a part-time office paraprofessional, instrumental teacher, a Title I teacher, a part-time custodian, and three specialists were reduced from 1.0 down to 0.8 FTE. And also Halifax is currently the seventh lowest in 2023 out of 399 local education associations in per pupil expenditure in the state of Massachusetts.
Can I just start that, that that's comparing against K through 12 and other districts? And that historically, elementary schools are cheaper to educate than the upper levels? I just want to.
I agree, and thank you for pointing that out. Keep in mind that every single elementary school that is in the same situation as us is included in that.
Sure. No, I just, I just want to make sure, just because I know that sounds extremely dramatic. But when you compare our elementary school to Kingston, our spending is similar, which is in the same district, same boat, so.
So is that true, like, where does Kingston and Plumpton rank out of that 399?
So when I presented per pupil expenditure to you two months ago?
Yep.
The most recent data was 2022. The 2023 data has come out, and I can put that together for you and send it to you?
I'm just, as we think about regionalization, as we think about equity amongst our elementary and intermediate levels, I think it's important to keep in mind where the three towns fall in the state metrics.
So then, on this next slide, the first thing the administration does when we start talking about budgets is we have the conversation about what can we do to move instruction forward, to progress, to grow as a district. And so these were the proposed costs beyond the level service budget, and these positions are not included in the level service budget. So there's an ask for an additional special ed teacher, four part-time lunch and recess paraprofessionals. We'd like to move the behaviorist job from a BCBA to an RBT. There is no cost involved in that transition.
We voted that last meeting, right?
We did. Okay, sorry.
No, it's okay. I just wanted to make sure.
I'm just running through the slides. I don't even know if I'm supposed to be doing this slide, to be honest. A funding source change for the math interventionist was proposed, and we would like to have a discussion about OTPT staff versus continuing to hire contractors. So the total estimated increase with all of these positions is $134,000. And this increase would have a significant impact on the educational offerings to the students of Halifax Elementary Schools.
So this is above the level service budget?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? You said you wanted to have a discussion around hiring PTOT versus contracting. I'm assuming that even though we're spending, if we add to staff, there'll be a reduction in the amount that we're paying contracted services. Sorry, thank you.
So when we would do that, it wouldn't be directly for Halifax unless you had enough services at the school for a full-time OT and a full-time PT. It would be a cost share and to be allocated by building for the students that have, it's a much more efficient way of utilizing the time of our, of our related service providers. So if a person spends two and a half days here, and then maybe two and a half in another school, then we're getting the most bang for our buck.
Almost like regionalization.
Well, I didn't say that, but.
I know, but almost, almost like that. But is that, is that something we have to vote on? Because I feel like a position like that makes so much sense.
I think you need the hardcore numbers, which we are gathering now.
Okay.
And then we can present them to you, and then go.
If it's a shared cost, it would need to be approved by Union 31 at the joint meeting.
But it would also benefit that school, because they would no longer be paying for contracted services, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be a Halifax school committee vote.
Right. It would be a Union 31 vote. Okay.
So our last slide, we are going to ask you to please vote a budget tonight. If for no other reason, the town and the community needs to prepare for whatever the decision of the school committee is, and the sooner we make that decision, as difficult as that may be for you, the better off our town and community will be. So we're opening it up for questions that you may have. If you notice the last slide, Sarah has prepared sample language. But again, it will depend upon what, what amount of money you decide to go with will influence the language that you actually use.
Um, oh, no. I was just going to make an overall statement, just so, this isn't what we want to do. But when we're given a budget to work in, that's all we can do. The town, it's like your household budget. If your costs go up, you have to cut somewhere else. And we are only given a certain amount of money from the town to work with, with the exception of an override, which can only be approved by our Board of Selectmen. So we could vote a budget that's level service, that doesn't cut anything, which we would all love. But then, the town, the Board of Selectmen would have to agree to do the override first. And then it would have to be voted on at town meeting and at the town election. And there's a lot of you in here, but I don't, I know not all of you live in Halifax, but like, even the amount, you know, this isn't even, wouldn't be close to the amount of people needed to vote an override. And to do a level service budget with an average, we have about 2,800 taxpayers in this town. And obviously, it's all related to what your house value is. But if I just take the 1.3 million that we are talking about tonight and divide it by the 2,800, that would be about $466 per household added to their tax bill for the year. And so that's where you would have to convince the town, essentially. If you want to have, if we don't want to make any cuts, then it would have to be going to the town to be willing to each pay extra, which I know a lot of people in this room agree with it, that's why you're here. But the problem is getting the overall town to vote for it. And so. But I'm, but I'm just saying, but also, we have to be prepared, if it doesn't pass, if the town doesn't vote to pass it, we know what we're looking at right now. But we can't really pass two budgets tonight. So as a school committee, we're trying to look into a crystal ball of, do we try to go for an override? Two of our selectmen just asked us basically not to. I mean, that's the message I was receiving, that, you know, a lot of townspeople don't want that. And there's a pretty big divide in the town, I would honestly say. And so as a school committee, we have to decide how to work within these honestly difficult parameters of not wanting to cut to our schools. I have four kids. They've gone through the school system. They're doing awesome. I, you know, like, I love this school system. That's why I'm sitting here. And, you know, we want to do, but, you know, we can only do what the town will actually vote on. And it's, that's the thing that's hard for me. I don't know what to predict, and I can't say exactly what it will cost everyone in the town.
Dr. Prue, for the benefit of everyone, can you share with us what would happen should a budget not be, or an override not be approved at town meeting? And I'm specifically talking about timing and the fact that Desi could step in, in our place.
Desi wouldn't step in because we're meeting net school spending. Even, even with the cuts, well, with at least the tier.
You have to have an approved budget. So a budget would have to be approved at town meeting. I don't know if you want to open it up to the select people here. But only the Board of Selectmen can choose whether or not to put forward an override.
So we could even decide tonight, okay, we're going, we want to go with level service, and they could say, we're not going to put forth an override. But I'll let the selectmen speak.
Well, I was just going to say, I mean, with kids in the school system, I would love to have no cuts. Level service budget, no cuts. That being said, as I mentioned before, CPA for $85 a household just got voted down. So now we're talking on average a $460-something dollar per year increase. And while we all would support a level service budget, even if a Board of Selectmen put it forward, it's still incumbent upon the voting public, the town, which in this case is not the Board of Selectmen, or the town administrator, or any of us, it is literally the people voting, which is different than the town asking for a budget tonight. So you have a town asking for a budget and a town voting for an override. If I had any confidence in the override passing, I would put it on the budget. I'd put it on the agenda for the town meeting. I don't have any confidence in that passing, based on any number of things we've seen recently. So I'm only cautioning a vote based on what we can expect to happen, based on the consequences of tonight, not in what I would like to see happen. But as a member of, you know, an elected body, we have an incumbent decision to put forward to the town, the voting public, what will pass?
Well, and I will.
Not what we want to pass.
Sorry. And one thing in comparison, and the thing is, is we wouldn't have to go for the full amount either. I'm just letting you know all the things I've been thinking of, because I think about this a lot, that, you know.
You're not alone.
The school is not the CPA. I mean, I, I will say that, if you were to, so.
It's so much different, but an increased tax burden on an average household is not that much different. The reason behind it could be different. But somebody looking to trim their budget with no kids in the system, or with no investment in the town for the next generation, might think differently than the people who are here tonight. You're not seeing any, any opposition tonight, because we're all in favor of the school system and what it provides today, tomorrow, and next year.
Well, I know, it's a friendly room to go for an override in. I'm only letting selectmen speak, sorry.
So that's not public comment, then?
Well, it was because I needed information.
Let him speak, we want to hear him.
I'm the chair.
You have, you have money available. You have money available. You just said this $326,000. If you stop spending on the town side of the budget, and you put that back into the circuit breaker, you can move that money forward. You have money in the out-of-district placements for the kids that go to agriculture. You can make that cut in a previous, in a, in a next meeting.
But we have to vote a budget tonight, based on the information we have.
But you should go through the process. Just because you think it doesn't work, doesn't mean the kids aren't worth trying.
I take issue, I take issue with, we're sitting at this table. We spend countless hours volunteering our time at this table. I don't have any kids in the school, but I love this school, I love this town. All of my kids went through this school. I started attending school committee meetings when my kids were in the school, and I started paying attention. And I applaud all of you for being here, because we need people coming to these meetings to understand what's happening. But of course, the kids are worth it. Of course, the kids are worth it. And we are trying our level best to deliver a budget that is doable for our town and provides a quality education for our kids, and you're tasking us with something that's near impossible. We all want to do this. We all want to try. I have very strong feelings about this. But I do take exception with, we owe it to the kids to try. That's what we do all the time when we come to these meetings and put in the work and the research. And I would like to ask some questions, and I sent some emails to Dr. Prue, and I pulled out Excel, and I'm a person that likes to map things out, to understand them. So if it's okay, I apologize that I don't have something that I can share with the larger audience, but I would like to share a worksheet I put together and ask some questions around it, if that's okay. Okay. So I don't think I have enough for everyone at tables, but if you can pass them around. So based on the presentation that we gave, that was given, showing class sizes, there's a couple of things that I think are important to note. I, I agree with Jessica that it feels like we should have like a one and a half. I think that it's hard to look at that slide. Can you put up the tier-two slide, Sarah? It's, it's hard to, it's hard to look at that slide and see all the minuses. I am not, I personally am not comfortable voting to remove or to cut $900,000. And I understand the risks. And my feeling is that, similar to what other towns in our district are doing, I think it's important for us to bring it to the town and let that process play out. I kind of ran the numbers, looking at if we were to, if we were to eliminate a teacher at certain levels. We have, we have classrooms that currently with four teachers have an average of 17 students and 19 students. If we were to remove a teacher, just three.
If we were to remove a teacher, just three teachers, we would still have in grade two, our current grade two, so next year's grade three, would be a classroom size of 22. Grade four would be a classroom size of 22. And grade six would be a classroom size of 23. And then, looking at what the other town classroom sizes are and the classroom sizes in seventh and eighth grade, that's pretty comparable to what's happening elsewhere in the district. I need to say, I don't want to cut teachers, but that is an area that we should have some conversation around. The other thing I think that is important to note about eliminating staffing positions is we are voting on a dollar value to cut. We are not voting on eliminating staffing. At the end of the day, we vote on the dollar value of what our budget is. And then, it is up to our administrators to decide how to spend that money because they have line item autonomy. So, last year, we had a conversation when we voted the budget about deducting our specialists to a point one, or a point nine across four different FTEs. And then, there was some adjustments made where three specialists were lowered to a point eight and one specialist was remaining at a one. That is a decision not made by the school committee. And I think those are things that it's important for those in the audience to recognize. The other thing that's on this little spreadsheet that I put together, and again, I apologize that I don't have this to share. But our kids have really had a difficult journey post-pandemic. And the pandemic does play a factor into why our budgets are so outsourced. Everything is more expensive right now. But if you look at the grade that is the most affected by the pandemic, it's our current grade five, so next year's grade six. Those kids had remote learning for half of their kindergarten. They had, their first grade year was hybrid, and then they were masked their entire second grade. Those played a factor in how they're educated. But they're, they're going into sixth grade. In the majority of districts, a sixth grade would be considered middle school. We expect middle schoolers to have a larger degree of independence. So, again, I think cutting a teacher at that level and retaining staff in kindergarten, first grade, and second grade is worth a discussion. So, if we were to just eliminate three teaching positions, where does that bring us in eliminating budget or reducing budget? I know that's a whole lot I just threw out there.
Sarah can give you an estimate using the same number that we've used to estimate all teaching positions. Obviously, there's going to be some variability depending upon seniority and licensure.
My personal opinion is, I feel like after studying this all, I agree, some of our class sizes can be increased and still have learning be optimal. And I, I think that we should take it as an approach of some cuts, but also asking for some override.
That's how I feel. You articulated it a lot simpler than I did just now.
I mean, because I, I don't think, I, I don't, I, I think a smaller amount would be more palatable to the town. And also, if the override doesn't pass, then.
We've already started the work that we need to do.
And, and that's what, I mean, I, I, you know, I, I want to give it to the town. Let the, you know, I mean, I don't actually, I wish we just had the money. But I don't want to give it, but, I mean, this is our only option, is to either, you know, go for the complete amount override, go for a partial amount. I mean, I assume if we can cut a bus, we can cut a bus, you know, like, things like that that are, yes?
If we, sorry, because I'm doing such different things at once. If we were to cut a bus, we would want to entertain the, the pay for ridership that we had talked about earlier. Because I don't know that we actually can cut a bus, but we could trans, transition the cost of one bus into a revolving account.
So, if we cut a bus, then we start charging for buses. It's kind of a win-win because we lose the price of a bus, but we gain money that we get from charging for the bus?
The operating budget would lose the bus and we would pay for it out of the revolving account that would be set up for the fees gained.
Through the town.
Laurie, to answer your question, if, if the tier-one cuts that are made are done and we cut three teachers, then that leaves us 1.095 million apart from where the town would like us to be.
So, not even close. I think we cut everything that they asked last year, and we didn't even ask the town for a cent. And then, we ended up giving the town money because we cut too much. I think we go back to the town and ask for an override. And then, they can say no. But I would like to also meet with the Board of Selectmen and talk about it then. But I think we owe it to, we can't decide what the town is going to decide. There's five of us here. We're not going to know what the town is going to say. The town didn't want the CPA, but they might want to fund the schools. We have no idea.
I agree with you, Jess, but I do think that we have to wait, like, the tone in the town has never been friendly to education, quite frankly. We have always had difficulty getting education funded and complaints. And I'm just, I'm just the guy feeling the tone of the town, watching things get shot down, seeing people talk about how they don't have any money to spend, say no to everything. I, I, everyone in this room wants this budget to pass as is. You've got selectmen telling you they don't necessarily want to go for an override. I personally, I don't want to cut it. I was pretty angry after last year's budget. I was pretty fired up after January's meeting. Correct. So, I'm with you.
We only got 100,000 left over. I know, but I'm just saying that it goes back.
I would take 100,000 in a heartbeat.
I'm just saying, you have to, like, you're, you can't, like.
We have, we have a tough job.
Yeah, it's a tough job. It's, it's not a precise thing. And I would wonder, so if we don't have, if we, if an override doesn't pass, what town services do you want to give up?
I'm not saying any of that. I'm just saying we need to ask the town what they want to do. We can't, we can't cut everything and then, like we did last time, and then not ask the town.
Town services would have to cut. Which town services are you willing to go without?
To that point though, Lauren, like, that's not our job right now. Like, our job is school committee members. So, I think we have to listen to all the other factors. But I, I am, my consideration is that I don't, I'm not comfortable with cutting anything other than those potentially three teacher salaries and going back to the town. I mean, that's just how I feel.
I think ask for an override. And then, over the next few meetings until May, we come up with some other ideas, like charging for buses and potentially, potentially charging for kindergarten. I know that's not ideal, but, I mean, they have a preschool usually.
I don't have any problem asking for an override.
I don't think that you do. I just, I, I'm not saying you do. I just, I think that it's just, it's not fair to not let the town now decide this. It's just, bring it to the town, they're going to say yes or no. If they say no, we figure it out. I just don't think, to figure it out now when the town meeting is in May, when they, we can vote on it, they could, they could say yes. Just like they, they've said yes to a lot of the senior center. We need a school, we don't need a senior center. I know that's awful to say, but we need a school.
We're mandated, we're manned, like, we have to have education. We have to educate our children.
Exactly. We're not mandated to have a senior center, but we voted yes on that a lot.
I'm just going to put it out there, that's not a popular strategy to get an override.
I'm just saying, a lot of people showed up to that meeting, a lot of people showed up to this meeting and voted yes.
I hope so.
Me too.
Since, just in clarification, so say that we decide to go with the override and then it doesn't pass, where do, where is our scramble plan at that point? Then, do we make all these cuts last minute and we have no?
Cody?
The way an override works is if you put an override forward, there's two components that have to pass. First is your budget has to pass town meeting. So, town meeting makes the appropriation. Our town meeting is historically before the election. So, you actually have to vote basically a what-if budget. You'd say, if town meeting votes the what-if budget, which would be the higher appropriation, that would be what if the override passes, then that would pass. Then, you'd also have a secondary budget for what the town could currently afford, given no override. So, you'd effectively have to present two budgets at town meeting. Those would have to both ultimately pass, and then it would go to the ballot. And if the override passes to the ballot, then you would go with the higher budget that included the override. If not, it's where the budget would be at town meeting with the override not.
Is it Tony?
Cody.
So, essentially, we have the budget that's presented now, or a level service budget, right? Those are the two options you're talking about there?
Well, it's the budget as a whole for the whole town.
Okay, but as they are closing now, what happens if they go forward with the level service budget tonight?
The Board of Selectmen has to decide if they want to put an override on the ballot.
And can we not do an override if they go with the lower budget tonight? Like, is that not an option?
No, we, if, if we do what the town has asked, a level-funded budget plus the 1.75%, which is, was the last slide, then there wouldn't need, we wouldn't need an override.
No, but we, the town can't override that? Like, if you guys decide on this lower budget tonight, it's a done deal?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yes.
You got it. My first one.
So, can I, I haven't really spoken yet.
No, go ahead.
So, there's a couple of things that I, I want to clear up from my perspective. One, I, I think it's only fair to our students for them to receive the best education they could receive. As an educator, I stand behind our children in that. They need the best services they can get so that they can meet that 70% or greater. As we start reducing teachers, as we start reducing, the ones that bother me the most right here are the math specialist and the reading specialist, because now we're removing tier-two support for our students, which they absolutely need. It, it bothers me greatly that those are up there because that is the way that we support our students who are not meeting or exceeding. And so, yes, every one of these positions is valuable, but I am highly concerned about those.
Especially if we're going to have to cut the teachers.
Absolutely, because they're going to need even more support. I'm concerned with the fact that we have not filled that behaviorist position. And I would love an update. Since we changed the title of the position and the recommendations, have we filled it?
Still contracting services.
So, since we haven't filled it, again, increasing classroom sizes, you're going to have more behaviors for the teacher to deal with. And they're not going to be able to deal with 30, 40 students in some of these cuts and still be able to provide quality education, high-level education, okay? I'm concerned about safety by removing a bus. How many more students are going to be put on a bus without bus monitors watching these students? And yes, library technology, especially this day and age, and art are very valuable. So, every one of these positions is absolutely important. I myself also looked through the numbers and did some math. And I, I don't believe that we should be making blanketed cuts as far as like one teacher per grade. It does not make any common sense. We need to be looking at how many students are in that grade and saying, we, our ideal is a classroom size of whatever that number is. 21, 22, 28 in kindergarten? Oh, my goodness, I don't know if you've ever heard the phrase herding kittens, but that's exactly what that is in a kindergarten classroom, herding kittens. Everyone's doing their own thing, and as soon as you get one student doing what they're supposed to be doing, they're not doing it. And of course, there's, again, the safety issue. If we don't have the paras to support our kindergarten classes and we're trying to teach even simple things like scissor safety in a classroom of 28 kids, that's going to be difficult. As a taxpayer, I am also very concerned. I brought up at the last meeting, our tax rate is extremely high. I don't want to have to pay any more money in taxes, but I will tell you, I, education is a second career, third career for me. And I went into it because I love the kids. And I want to see children feel successful. And I, I will gladly pay $500 more so that our students are supported. So, I am recommending that we go for, and, and we're all going to have to do our part, every one of us. We're going to have to go grassroots. We're going to have to talk to everyone we know and spread the word far and wide that we are going to support this as a town. So, I am going to vote for a level service budget for, for those reasons. Can I just add one other thing? Our House and our Senate have legislatures right now, our, our lawmakers have proposed bills that we all need to be supporting to support education. They include things like Chapter 70 funds, funds for rural schools. We qualify for that. They're trying to say that because we're not, we don't have a lot of businesses supporting us, that we need to get more funding from the state. And these laws, you can look them up right on the state website, we need to be calling our lawmakers and backing these bills. You need to make the phone calls because, as, as it was stated, we're not the only school district going through this. Even towns like Duxbury have voted on, last I heard, going to a proposition two and a half. So, it doesn't matter rich or poor, we all need to be saying, the same thing we're all saying in this room, support our students and get the money where it needs to go. We need to stop funding stuff that doesn't need to be funded and get to where it's important. And the only way that's going to happen is if we all make noise, again, far and wide grassroots, so.
Karen?
Thank you for your time in preparing the budget, but I just, I'm asking questions, not criticisms, but just some questions, please. So, for, like, even, for he, even for tier-two, for special ed, would we even have the supports that we need in place by law to support our special ed students by cutting another special ed teacher?
So, when we discuss this as a team, we recognize that the impact would lead to greater caseloads for special education teachers. But it would not prevent us from meeting the legal requirements. The, the problem, as you know, caseloads, class sizes, has an impact on students.
Right, and so, then even dispersing our special ed population amongst fewer classrooms, is that still going to be like, to keep, you know, to make it, basically not have an inclusion class, right?
So, it's like a least restricted environment?
Think you'd be able to still work with those numbers too, with the fewer classes to mix students between, yeah, thanks.
There's no official guidance on how many. We tried, the recommended is 33 and 1/3. So, every, three out of 10 students. When you go up to 40 and 45 and 50, then you have an issue because usually the content is lower than what you would normally want for the grade level standard.
So, special ed, you think you have it covered? And I'm sure that you do, I just need to ask for myself. What about for the teacher's contract? If you're getting rid of specialists, how will they have their prep periods?
So, the, and I, I think the principal can do a better job at describing this, but in the, the most simplistic terms, if in fact you're going to cut this many classroom teachers, you're going, not going to need as much coverage for.
Right, that makes sense.
Prep and lunch for teacher, for grade level teachers. So, those cuts kind of go hand in hand. If you, if you don't cut as many teachers, then you're going to need more specialists. We're not even talking about whether or not the impact of losing things like the arts or things of that nature have on children. So, I don't want to seem as if I.
No, I know. I, it's another level, just like you sure sort of, yeah. And so, that was the rationale for keeping PE and music then? Did you just choose to, what we have to offer?
So, physical education has to be offered annually.
Does music?
Well, all of, all of your specials have standards. And we're trying to maintain some of the arts.
If I were to, is, well, I feel like everyone's spoken. So, if I were to summarize somewhat, it seems like we're all in favor of an override. I'm, my thoughts on that are, if we ask for less, do we have a greater chance of it passing? Or do you think it doesn't matter?
Personally, I don't think it matters.
I think for, to be respectful of the Board of Selectmen, that we should not, you know, meet them, show that we're trying to make a good choice, that's respectful of them and the town's wishes, but still not cutting all of that.
Here's my concern. My concern is that if we do our part and did cut some, we still have the unknown of Silver Lake and what they're going to bring forward. And that could very easily be the, you know, the camel that, you know, the straw that breaks the camel's back, so to speak. So, again, without having a crystal ball and knowing what Silver Lake is gonna vote, we're kind of between a rock and a hard place here. I feel like we did a really good job reducing last year, but maybe it wasn't reciprocated on the other end. And I'm, I'm saying that just because their costs are a little bit higher than ours and... So, I just wanna throw that out there that...
But it went from $39,000 to $41,000, much less of an increase, so I don't know. I mean, is that correct, that it's...
Well, I, I think the difficulty last year with Silver Lake is you had an extreme reorganization where more, more costs were shifted over to the Silver Lake budget. And they didn't have the benefit of things like circuit breaker to offset. So, in Halifax, we did take a circuit breaker offset, a sizable circuit breaker offset last year, which leads to an impression that the budget has increased by a greater percentage than...
Which, if you take that off, it's 10%, which is still large, but not 23.
And they, they kind of reduced the amount that they had to go back to the towns for because they used a, an account that had some funds in it.
They did.
But they're not, they don't have that this year to offset, correct?
Well, so we're, we submitted, so E and D stands for excess and deficiency. It's the regional school equivalent of what you refer to as free cash on the town's side. So, we submitted our E and D to the Department of Revenue in December, and we just heard back from them a week ago that they have looked at it. And then myself and the district accountant met with the Department of Revenue today, and we're given a list of things that need to be adjusted, and then we need to resubmit. So, there is this thing, this amount of money, E and D, that Silver Lake will end up having some amount. I don't know what it is yet, I'll let everybody know as soon as I know. But what I will tell you is generally, E and D is used for capital projects, maintenance of buildings, things like that. And so, we tend to think of the middle school and high school as being these brand-new and beautiful buildings, but they're 20 years old, and part of the infrastructure is failing. So, we can't take all the E and D and say, oh, let's offset the budget yet one more time and then lose HVAC or something like that.
So, can I ask, or just bring up one other point that I think, before we do any kind of voting, is important to think about? I am in support of voting a level service, but I'm also a realist and a pragmatist, and I don't think that, like, I don't think it's guaranteed that we're not gonna be cut, making cuts at a later point. I hope that our town rallies and gets the override. But I, you know, I have my, my thoughts that that may not happen. And if that's the case, I think one of the questions that I have is, at what point do we rally and come back to the table and look at other options? Is, are we doing that in June to make those cuts? Or is that something that the administration?
If the override doesn't pass, sorry, Cody, if the override doesn't pass, we will have already passed the level-funded budget at town meeting, correct? So, we would be looking at all three tiers of cuts if it doesn't pass. That's just how it will be.
Okay. So, the other thing that I think's important to point out, and I keep bringing up the word regionalization, this problem that we're dealing with this year, I don't think it's gonna change at all in the near future. And overrides aren't sustainable to that point. So, I do think it's imperative that we start thinking about how we are structured in our, in our district and how to fund education on a longer term, because there are overlaps in how we run... I mean, poor Dr. Prue is going to four school committee meetings, and Sarah, and Dr. Perrines, and, you know, it's just, it's not sustainable. It is an inefficient way to run a school district. It is creating inequity when you have three elementary and intermediate levels that are funding separate budgets with separate tax funding. It's just, I cannot say enough, if you wanna move forward and try to get this level service budget, all of you in this room also need to be rallying about regionalizing our school system, because we've, we've gotta find some more efficiencies.
Eliminate redundancies and...
Absolutely, absolutely. Poor Sarah's doing four budgets, that's insane. Give her more man-hours back.
Shared cost budget, five.
And I mean, again, like, that, we could be sharing costs with other contracts, I just, again...
Well, even special ed, technology contracting, like, to have in-house versus contracting is always going to save money. And then also, if we regionalize, then we're eligible for regionalization grants for busing, correct? Or something to that? So, there's, there's...
Regional transportation reimbursement.
Regional transportation reimbursement. And that's something our school committee is, has, you know, we applied for a grant, it's being studied for our three towns. We're trying as hard as we can.
I think that it's important to note, too, that we almost didn't get the benefit of the grant that we won because the town voted down the MBTA 3A rezoning, which, that was the will of the town, but there was an impact to our schools. Thankfully, Kingston has that zone, they're in compliance with that. So, we were able to shift the budget or the grant to Kingston, and they can continue to explore that work. But again, like, you know, votes have an impact on our children that we don't always realize, so.
Agreed. So, my question is, at this point, is, does someone wanna make a motion for a level service budget? Level service budget or with an override? Or do you think we should pare down some things and ask for less of an override? That's the discussion I feel like we're at at this point.
In my opinion, I think that there are several people at the table that spoke passionately about level service with an override. And if we feel strongly about that, we should put that forward. So, I would make a motion that we vote a level service budget at some point. If we don't get the override, then we know what it's going to look like when we need to make cuts.
Do you have, you have to say a number for the level service, right?
So, you take a look at the next slide? Do you have this one? Copy of the last slide?
It's this one.
Looks like this.
So, is she reading it verbatim?
No, it needs changes. So, if you're voting a level service budget, that first number needs to be $8,247,111.
Eight million, sorry.
Eight, two, four, seven, one, one, one.
It's not this number on the FY '26 over here, eight million, three, seventy-nine?
No.
Okay.
Can you say that number one more time, Sarah?
Yes. So, the number in the top line should be eight million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred eleven dollars. That same number gets repeated in the third line. Eight, two, forty-seven, one, eleven. The allocations in the middle, the one, the hundred thirty-two thousand, seven hundred five dollars stays in both places. The final number at the bottom is eight hundred, eight million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred sixteen dollars.
Okay, so that's that first, that's that number.
So, I'm voting the eight million, or making the motion for the eight million, two hundred forty-seven thousand.
You read it.
You've gotta read the whole thing, unfortunately.
I have all, you want me to do it?
Thank you. Sarah, that final number is that number that was on this page, correct?
Eight, eight million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred sixteen.
Okay, I'll make a motion to move that the Halifax School Committee approves eight million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars as the fiscal 2026 local education budget, upper budget, and further that the total appropriation of eight million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred and eleven dollars is in compliance with Education Reform Acts of 1993 and recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. And further, the school committee directs the superintendent to allocate the following additional fund sources, which total 132,705 dollars. Fiscal year '26 anticipated circuit breaker special education reimbursement of 132,705 dollars, and anticipated fiscal year '26 grant and revolving accounts funding totaling zero dollars. The final approved expenditures for the school will be eight million, three hundred and seventy-nine, eight million, three hundred seventy-nine thousand, eight hundred and sixteen dollars. Seconded.
I'll take a vote, Katie?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Karen? That's no?
Yes.
I'm a no, till it passes. That's all for the budget, right? Okay.
Can, can I ask a question while we're still on it? Because if it does not pass, for whatever reason, can we still discuss charging for buses and possible kindergarten to make up for some of the losses that we could incur? Does, does that make sense?
After the fact, yes.
So, it cannot be discussed now, but has to wait until after the town vote, is that...
You could discuss it at any point.
Can we put that on the agenda in a month?
So, keep in mind that if you're going to charge for buses or charge for kind, for the kindergarten, we would need a revolving account in order to put those funds into, and we would need to get a revolving account approved at town meeting, so...
So, that needs to be done prior to town meeting? So, it's something we should consider voting on tonight, so that, that can get on to...
Can we vote on that tonight, though? It's not on our agenda, we have to add that. We just talked about creating accounts. Okay. So...
Because it would have to be on the town warrant, correct?
Submitted to the town to be on the warrant.
I'm going to the Board of Selectmen meeting tomorrow night, I can, I, well, it has to be on the agenda, though, I guess, but...
Right.
Do, if we're just talking about creating accounts, it's just something I need to talk to the town about, correct? Or...
Well, if it needs to be on a warrant, we need to make sure we meet the deadline.
Is Cody still here? Cody, when is the deadline for the warrant?
Technically, the warrant closes March 11th. It's going to print probably at the end of March. As long as we have the request from the school by the end of March, that's fine. You can make the account, right? You can request us to make the account. You can put it on the warrant. You can always decide after the fact whether you impose the fee.
Okay.
Can we make the request right now? Or does that... Send you something, okay, I'll email you, okay.
And that doesn't mean we have to fund the account, correct? Just creating account is creating an account, correct?
Could it be used for kindergarten as well?
It, it needs to be two separate accounts.
Okay.
And the town meeting approval is what allows you to carry money over from year to year to year.
All right, so...
So, we can create accounts, but it's the carrying money over that, that requires town meeting approval.
So, I'll make a motion for our chair to contact the town offices to create two revolving accounts, one for charging for kindergarten, the other for charging for busing.
Okay.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. So, as far as dates to remember, February 17th through 21st is winter vacation. February 25th is a joint meeting, and our next Halifax meeting is March 10th, 2025. Can I get a motion to close the meeting?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn next meeting.
We have a second?
Second.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye, guys.